The meeting of the Lewisburg Area Board of School Directors. If you could please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
All right, thanks for everyone for joining us this evening. Two quick announcements. The board did meet an executive session for approximately thirty minutes prior to this evening's meeting to discuss a revised personnel report, sorry, not revised, the personnel report and also a personnel matter. The second announcement, we are missing two board directors this evening. John Rowe and Tara Anzeker-Facero are both excused from this evening's meeting. They both had other obligations this evening, so they are excused. With that, I'll move on to comments to the board. John, any citizens comments to the board on agenda items?
Let's spin the wheel here. Here we go. No current comments. For those of you playing along at home, if you would like to make a comment to the school board, please visit our website at www.lasd.us. Scroll down on the main page, click on the survey link, fill in your name, address, and your comment, and it'll be read later on this evening at another part of the meeting. Back to you, Mr. Fitzer.
All right, we'll move on to board representatives' comments. Mr. Bennett, you're at the top of the list there, so we'll start with you.
Okay, sounds good. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Few things I wanted to draw your attention to from Lindtown this week. The first of which is the PSA has been able to successfully carry out a book swap, both at Lindtown and Kelly, and Lindtown's happened last week. I believe Kelly's is either coming up or has happened, but um they had, I want to say, over five hundred books set up in the Makerspace, all spread out and organized visits for the kids to come down and take looks at the books without touching them. They were all sanitized and the kids were given directions that they would only ask permission to pick up a book if they were really, really interested in it, and then a volunteer from PSA would help them do that and then wipe the book down before it was returned to its place. So it happened with all the COVID protocols in place and was very successful, and the kids were very, very excited about it. So that was wonderful that the PSA could do that for us. We're also working on a neat project that Mrs. Forsman in fourth grade is heading up for us, one of our community service projects. We're doing a cereal box collection through the school and have over two hundred boxes of cereal collected to date with the rest of this week remaining. And what we hope to do with those is she had seen a video online of being able to set the cereal boxes up like Domino's all throughout the school and have the kids come out and stand in the hallway masked and distanced and topple the Domino's all the way down through the hallway of the school before we load them up and take them over and donate them to the Food Hub at the Miller Center, which is part of the Union County Community Action Agency, and give them away to people who would need them. So just a really fun project and something that Mrs. Forsman saw and wanted to do, and I think the kids are going to love that when it comes time to do that. We'll take a video of that and post it for you. Also, on our Facebook page, if you haven't had a chance to see, I did post the project that I had referenced a couple weeks ago that Ms. Diane Pauling did, our librarian, with Read Across America and the think, thin link, I think, that she created, where the map of the United States and books for all the different states that different teachers read or introduced. And the kids were able to access that on their devices and listen to teachers read books to them for Read Across America Week. And that resource is part of her library resources page on her Canvas page, and we also posted it on Facebook, so kids can always go back and reference that in the future. So that was really fun, and we had a lot of staff members jump in on that and participate. And then finally, I just wanted to highlight Mrs. Bennett and Mr. Dur in fifth grade, back in the fall, their kids had read a Time for Kids magazine article on the wildfires that were taking place out west earlier in the year. And they did several different things with that. After reading articles, they did some writing, different things, and they actually set up a Zoom call with Mrs. Bennett's son, Mike, who works out in Portland. And there'd been some wildfires out there, so they asked him about his experience. And they also wrote cards and asked questions to people at the Moonlit Sanctuary in Melbourne, Australia, where there had also been a lot of wildfires as well. And that is an animal sanctuary in Australia. And they got a response back from a lady named Brittany Bishop. And they, the staff there at the sanctuary went through and answered every single question that the Lindtown students had asked, which was close to fifty kids. And they made a spreadsheet and gave answers and just were telling the kids all about the different animal life in Australia and the effect of the wildfires there and things that they were able to do to help save and protect species in Australia. So Mrs. Bennett and Mr. Dur were thrilled to hear back. They weren't really expecting much with COVID and everything that's happening all around the world, but so when they got that response back from the sanctuary, they were overjoyed and went and shared that with the students who were also thrilled as well. So that's it from Lindtown, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Rule.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Good evening, everyone. As Mr. Bennett referenced, the book swap was also going on at Kelly this week. The students have really enjoyed being able to have the opportunity to select new books for their reading libraries at home. We had more than nine hundred and fifty books donated last week, and we're very appreciative to the PSA for coordinating the pickup, the quarantine, and the distribution of these books. We followed very similar protocols to what Mr. Bennett referenced in terms of students not really handling the books. But if they did want to pick one up and kind of, kind of take a closer look at it, they could ask for some adult help in previewing the book. But every student in the school, even if they did not bring in a book to donate, was able to pick one up. And it's just great to see books in the hands of kids and see them with the opportunity to have them go home to their libraries there. Also, I wanted to follow up and let you know that last week, some of my grade-level teachers, Dr. Pollenchak and I, were able to meet with Amanda Wooden from the PSA and Bucknell and several Bucknell students to discuss the outdoor learning pavilion near the Chestnut Tree Grove between Kelly and the high school. We took a look at multiple designs that the students had already put together, giving us different options for how we could use that space outside. And we really gave them some good feedback about maybe some ways to tweak those designs to maximize the number of students who are able to learn in that area as well as to provide teachers with good instructional space to extend their learning outside of the school building. So now the Bucknell students are going to go back and they're going to retool those designs based upon that feedback, and then we'll meet again at a later time for some further discussion. So we'll keep you updated on that project as it moves along. And the last thing I'll share with you, last night, the Green Dragon Foundation and the PSA, we held our annual event to welcome our incoming kindergarten families. So representatives from the foundation, the PSA, and Dr. Pollenchak gave an overview of the district to the families. And then I shared a slideshow of our students participating in various parts of the school day and then gave a narrative description of many of the common activities that the students do during the course of the day. We had quite a few follow-up questions from parents, which was wonderful, and a few emails reaching out to us with some extended questions. So the program was recorded and it's been posted on our Kelly website and on our Facebook page. So if any family was not able to join us live last night, they can certainly go back and review it, or if they had a question and didn't quite remember some of the information that was shared, they can go through and review that video as well. So thanks very much to the Green Dragon Foundation, the PSA, and Dr. Pollenchak for giving their time last night to welcome our new kindergarten families. This point, I'll turn it over to Ms. Reber.
Thank you, Mr. Rule. It was wonderful to see the great weather that we've had the last few days. And with that great weather, we saw teachers returning to outside spaces, not just for mask breaks, but also for learning activities. That is one thing that I am so hopeful and ties in with what Mr. Rule was just saying, positives that can come from our current situation. There was, you know, a couple of science classes that were out. The phys ed classes were out. There were at least two English classes that I saw out at different times. And it just really, I think, think bring homes, home, the point that this has given us a new perspective on how we can use those outspaces, outside spaces for learning. And so again, we're just excited about additional possibilities that may exist to just further enhance that. In other news, we have been busy getting the AP tests ordered for the current school year. Mrs. Vennel each year puts in our order for that. So the deadline for the testing is tomorrow. We have one hundred and seventy-seven students signed up for three hundred and sixty-six tests. All of those students may not take all of those tests, but it is a considerable, how, I guess, you know, just financial expense, because if you decide that you want to add a test later, there's a significant fee. And as we saw last year, that there were some cases where they did not let people change and add later on. So we encourage everyone to do so at the, at the beginning. I had told you before, the AP is offered an additional testing session this spring. So we also have that. So hopefully, we'll have more students that are actually taking that exam this year. The last two weeks, I've
Paula, we can't hear you.
Ms. Reber, are you there? Oh.
We can move on to Mr. Wetzel.
I can always start, and then if she gets back, we can start her right up. Yep, no problem. So also at the high school, we're at that time of year with winter sports concluding. And I know we're going to provide a more in-depth overview and the board update that you'll get from Dr. Pollenchak. But two of the kids we wanted to highlight tonight were Kaden Wagner and Logan Bartlett. They made it to States for Wrestling. And this year, in States for Wrestling, they're only taking eight wrestlers at each weight class. So going into the tournament, these students already know they've medaled at the state meet. And Logan particularly is just someone to highlight tonight. He didn't initially qualify for super regionals. He was the first alternate. And on Thursday of the week before super regionals, we got a call that a wrestler ahead of him scratched due to COVID. So he got the call, and luckily, he was staying in shape. He was helping Kaden practice. He ended up in, he lost his first match of super regionals and then beat a returning state place winner and then ended up having to beat a kid that has already beaten him three times this year to qualify. And he's a kid that is a leader for all in the program. He volunteers his time with the elementary kids. He leads by example, and it was just great to see him have that second chance. And there's a phenomenal article in the Sun Gazette that they wrote about him and kind of the buildup to that and just Coach Michaels, our coach, kind of explaining just the role Logan has played and the role model he's been for the program. So we're super excited for them. Also, we have our music students continue to excel and really just amaze us. This year's been unique that they haven't been able to have their regular practices as frequent as possible, and they've still continued to excel at the highest level. We have three kids that were all Eastern music. They were selected from twelve states on the East Coast. So that was Liam Cummings, Chen Cheng Guo, and Ryan Shaba-Hang. They continue to advance, and it's just amazing to see what our kids have been able to do and to do it virtually and still showcase their talents. And we also had McKenna Maori. She actually was all-state for the Piccolo. So just an awesome honor for her. And again, it's, our music program is such an incredible aspect of our schooling and so important for our kids. And even though with COVID and everything going on, they've still been able to provide those experiences for our students. And then the last thing I have is this, yesterday was the first day in a three-part series of a training that Dr. Pollenchak assembled a team in the district to attend. It's promoting social justice and school discipline and equity policies. And there's a keynote speaker and then their breakout session. So every Wednesday, for three Wednesdays here, we're able to select three different sessions to attend. And I know Paula, myself, and the other members from the high school that attended were very excited with the topics and the information. Really powerful stuff that I think we're going to be able to take back. And as a district, across the district, there are several administrators and staff members that are attending. So I think it's great information that we're really going to be able to use to build and move forward here for years to come. And that's all I have. I'm not sure if Paula's back.
I am, so either my, yep, so either my internet switched here to the guest Wi-Fi or Mr. Fairchild just decided to cut me off. I don't know either one's. I said either, I didn't say you did. I said either or. So as I was saying, just in summary, the seniors and junior officers from Student Council and from the classes are doing a great job of gathering information and moving ahead, as some other districts are, of planning those end-of-the-year events. Of course, everything we need to make sure follows safety and health. We have a group of parents that will absolutely, I am sure, chip in in various areas where we don't have the resources for. We're sending a survey to students, junior and senior students, I think tomorrow or Monday. And then we have one that will also go out to parents to see in what ways they would be able to help or other ideas that they may have. And just a fun thing that's happening in the building that Mrs. Rogers is doing with her ninth-grade ecology students. So this is a very popular time of year. March Madness is soon coming, but March Mammal Madness is happening right now. This is actually an event that started in two thousand and thirteen and has grown over the years. It's a simulated competition, and it basically is a simulated combat competition among different animals. So they look at the animal attributes and they, you know, basically battle it out. And students predict who is going to make it to the next round based on things such as their running speed, fight style, you know, body weaponry, their physiology and motivation. So there's just a lot of aspects of ecology that you can look at. They have a bracket out on the one wall in the high school, and it's just a really neat activity that just capitalizes on a very popular time of year, but that focuses on a school event. So at this time, I'm going to turn it back to Jordan. And Mr. Drosen is off with knee surgery right now. He did very well, and apparently, his leg lifting today impressed the the PT team who commented that only ten percent of patients can usually do this at particular exercise. So he's riding that wave right now. So thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Dr. Fairchild, I'll turn it over to you and Mr. Gallegos for the bipolar ionization update.
Okay, so you had attached to our agenda the results of the needlepoint bipolar installation for the school district. And I'm not a smart man, I am but a simple spreadsheet farmer, but I can read graphs. And as you saw through the entire report in all four buildings in the various places where samples were taken, we now have a lot more ions. They're bouncing into each other all over the place. And on a positive note, our cumulative particulate levels have decreased, which means there's more ions and less bad stuff. That's the scientific explanation. So you can see throughout the, the rest of the buildings there, Kelly, Lindtown, Middle School, and High School, we've all seen positive results here. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Gallegos for any additional comments. Okay. Mr. Gallegos may not be interested. At the middle school here, you can see at the cafeteria, we had a very large decrease in the cumulative particulate levels. So just wanted to share that with you. We did get the results back from a clor, and the results were a success. So I would call this a very good investment. Any questions?
All right, thanks for the update. We'll move on to board action under old business. The first item is the AP Capstone Diploma Program application. We heard Ms. Reber give the presentation at our last meeting. But Dr. Pollenchak, anything to add?
No, this is just a motion to go forward with the submission of the application to the College Board.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Zablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton. Any discussion? I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The second item under old business is the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two organizational chart.
This is the organizational chart that was presented before. We had pulled it back just with some changes in staffing that we had to consider whether there would be recommendations for a change in how we structured our technology department according to Blast IU, who we've been consulting with. They feel that our structure is fine, so we're not making any changes there. And it includes the two, at least the one position that was proposed and accepted by the board two meetings ago.
I hear a motion to approve the organizational chart. Moved by Mr. Heath. Seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Hearing none. Paula, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mrs. Brown?
Yes.
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 All right, we'll move on to the first item under new business, the Capital Blue Cross proposal. Dr. Fairchild?
Yes, you have in front of you the Capital Blue Cross renewal for three years. And we had previously budgeted a ten percent increase. And now they have come back, and with this locking in, our increase for next year will be reduced to two percent. And then we will have eight percent caps, as opposed to our previous ten percent caps for the following two years. So I would ask that you approve this renewal package here this evening.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Zablonski, seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call votes, please, Paula.
Yes.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark? Yes.
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 We'll move on to the next item, the revised job descriptions. Dr. Pollenchak?
So we're presenting a few job descriptions this evening. The first is federal programs were revised. This includes the elementary intermediate principal at Lindtown. The thought was that with this position, is we're always looking to have balance with the administrators' work. Federal programs is something that you truly do learn a lot about budgeting. You learn a lot about staffing, and it's a good skill set for an administrator that has aspirations, particularly to move on into central office at some point in the career. The good news is, in terms of the work of federal programs, both Kathy and I have experience working with that. So we would be mentoring and training. The Department of Ed does provide, and as a matter of fact, many of the trainings are mandatory to attend. And I would imagine that more will be virtual now, even not needing to go to the intermediate unit or support at the intermediate unit for federal programs as well, if there's any technical questions. In terms of the work that it takes to do, it's probably all told about the week's worth of work, but spread out throughout the year. A good bunch of it happens in the summertime when the grants are submitted and then just some regular compliance accounting. All of the budgeting is handled by, and the financial reports are handled by, the business office. Any other tweaks to the position for the principal? I didn't think there was anything else to note there. The second position is the Director of People's Services and Athletic Director. So this position has, we've taken the responsibilities of what, what we know to happen in special education, including the 504 and gifted education, and the responsibilities within the athletic department. You'll see also here later in the agenda that the athletic fund is moving into the general fund. So much of the bookkeeping work, purchases, requisitions, things of that nature, pending officials, all of that will be handled by the business office. And personnel will occur as it does with any other employees with the collection of clearances and approval, which is handled by Ms. Moser and Ms. Young. Next position we have is the Supervisor of Information Technology. Kathy, I'll let you speak to that one.
Sure. Any changes there? So again, our tech department, as we know, we have a lot of work going, and we've been working with Blast, who really can help us most with what you would call the hardware end of things and where we need to be with our servers, where we need to be with our switches, where we need to be with particular pieces that, again, we're asking Blast to work with us. The other part of the job in our teaching and learning is to really help us with the integrations of particular software programs and applications as they are pertinent to K-12. And so we worked a little bit with the job description at this time, since it's a job opening that we have posted. And you'll see the job description has more of an incorporation of some of those pieces of information technology as well.
And the final position is the High School Assistant Principal position with Mr. Wetzel's recommendation to take on the Lindtown Elementary Principalship, which will be later on in the agenda, that would create a vacancy for the High School Assistant Principal. And whenever we have a vacancy, it's a good time to take a look at the job description and see if it accurately reflects what the work is that's needed and actually performed.
Do I have a motion to approve the revised job descriptions?
A motion to vote on each deposition separately?
Motion to separate them and vote on them separately. Is there a second?
Second.
So moved by Dr. Zablonski, seconded by Dr. Zimmerman. Any discussion? Hearing none. I can do this by voice vote, so we're voting to vote on them separately. So all in favor of separating them, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we'll take the first one. Is there a motion to approve the intermediate school principal and federal programs coordinator?
So moved.
Dr. Zablonski, seconded by Mrs. Clark. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I will move on to the next, the Director of People's Services. Is there a motion to approve the job description?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Heath. Seconded by Mrs. Brousse. Any discussion?
I'd like to, I, I think that this is a good position. I think Dr. Pollenchak did an excellent job identifying the needs of the district and doing what needed to be done with the resources that we have. I am looking at our deficit. I'm not at all suggesting that this position should not exist. I actually very much support this position. But if we approve all four of these in their current situation, or, you know, there's really only two we can talk about. We, I don't know how we close the deficit, right? So I just, I just want us to consider, I want us to talk about that before we decide to move forward with everything at this time. How will we close the deficit? Just to put those numbers out. Just to put those numbers out that we talked about earlier, right? So we have, we have a near million dollar deficit. We did not approve a curriculum coordinator position. That was about 150K and we didn't support the MTSS position. So let's put that at like 100K. And the, it's a near one-to-one for near close with the people services and athletic director position and the former director or coordinator for special education. I just, it's the, I'm putting the question, how do we close the deficit?
Well, we can, like I said, currently there are those multiple positions in there, but with the board and superintendent's direction, we can take some of those out and then that would work on closing the deficit.
Right, but I only, we only saved $300,000 on a million dollar deficit. And we're only transferring less than 300,000 to capital, right? And we only have a contingency of less than 300,000.
We, the capital reserve is, they're back to their original, what we normally budget. So 350,000 is budgeted for capital reserve and 325 is for budgetary reserve. Those are both in there.
Right, but we would never take those to zero.
We, we, in the past, we've taken capital reserve, capital transferred down to zero and moved forward with just whatever we have left over. We can reduce the budgetary reserve. I don't recommend it. We can also look at our cyber charter. We saw, as I mentioned, back in the beginning of our budget process, we saw a huge spike in our costs. Last year, we had about 300,000. This year, we're about 1.1 million. So our budget does include an increase for our cyber charter costs, which according to the cyber charter law, we are responsible for paying. But we can look at that as we get closer to the end. And I know we've recently sent out surveys to parents of cyber charter students to see if they plan on returning to maybe give us a better sense of what we might be facing in the fall. So maybe as we get closer to finalizing the budget, we could also look at that number, you know, maybe take that down, knowing that we accept the risk that some kids may not come back as well. So we do have options in terms of closing the deficit. Does that help?
It does. I mean, this is the moment, right? This is the moment where we, we really have to decide, like we're going forward with this, which I fully support. But I wanted that all out. For anyone who's listening or may hear this later, we will close the deficit. We will approve these positions. These are important, but we do not have any additional monies to support additional positions is a very clear message, right? I mean, do you, we all kind of feel that and understand that? Okay, so a motion to approve the Director of People's Services and Athletics.
We are, we are voting on the job description, right? We are not voting on actually.
We actually already voted.
We voted to approve it, I know, but this, we are, we are addressing that.
Whether anybody fills the position would come on the personnel agenda when it comes forward. So just having the job description approved, then we can go out and post, but the board still has the opportunity to make a decision as to whether or not an individual will fill that position. One of those is on for tonight, just Mr. Wetzel.
I was, I totally agree. I think this was the last, this goes out as a job ad is the next step, right? This was the last time that we could have this conversation and have the public know what was happening.
But either way, I mean, we have a retirement that we've already approved for the special ed position. So I mean, we still have to fill that position. And in doing so, this, it's a, it's not necessarily an added position. There's some added, you know, cost to it, but I see it as almost cost neutral for this position between the stipend of the AD and also the, the.
That wasn't budgeted, okay, the 9,000, but the other part wasn't budgeted, the previously approved.
Correct, right. But either way, I mean, we would have to replace that position. Either way, it would just be a slightly lesser salary, which is a difference of John.
$30,000.
Okay.
Roughly.
Maybe 40.
Any other discussion? We do have a motion and a second to approve this job description. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'll do a roll call vote, please, Paula.
Yes.
Mrs. Clark?
Yes.
Mr. Besser?
Yes.
Mr. Heath?
Yes.
Dr. Jablonski?
Yes.
Ms. Stanton?
Yeah.
Dr. Zimmerman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We'll move on to the Supervisor of Information Technology. Do I hear a motion to, Dr. Jablonski, seconded by, I think someone's, thank you, Dr. Zimmerman? Any discussion? The last one I did a roll call. Sorry, I could have done a voice vote. We'll do the voice vote here as well. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And then the last one is the Assistant High School Principal position. Is there a motion to approve the job description?
Second.
Moved by Ms. Stanton, second by Mrs. Browse. Any discussion?
I just had a question. It seems like a staggering amount of job responsibilities. Is this normal for this position?
You're talking about assistant principal?
Yeah.
Yeah, I marked it up.
Yeah.
This is an impressive position.
In a lot of, in a lot of respects, the high school principal is, is the principal in training. So there are many of these tasks would be done along with the principal or assigned by, but depending upon the tasks, it's all the menu of things that could happen, but not all of this happens on a daily basis.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Wetzer, Mr. Wetzel, we're appreciative of you. In this current position. So we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the revised board committee and liaison appointments. Bring forward a revised committee and liaison appointment sheet. This is the first time I've actually opened it on an iPad. So on my computer, there's charts. So if that's missing, I apologize. It should be there and a little easier to read. So. But we did add a few appointments to committees based off of our discussions at the last board meeting and also previous discussions. So they are here in front of the board tonight. Do I hear a motion to approve the list?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Zimmerman, second by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Hearing none. I can do this by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. And we'll move on to board information under new business. The first item is the course offerings report. Ms. Reber?
Thank you. And there you can see, this is the first of two reports that I do regarding courses at the high school. Our, much of the high school schedule is generated on student requests. So the, the complete offering of what will run next year will be given out to the board for them to see at a later report that'll be done after the requests are made. So right now, it's only changes to the course selection guide itself. So we are going to be adding AP Computer Science Principles. This is something we have looked at the last several years and are really excited that we have a staff member that is very capable and very excited about teaching this course. They'll do the training, of course, and everything this summer, work with Mrs. Fennel, myself and Mrs. Moser to make sure that the AP syllabus gets, you know, added in and, and everything on the college board. And, but it's an introductory college level course. And it also has the ability to count as the fourth math credit for several of our, for our students who take it, which that's a great opportunity for kids who maybe don't want to go the calculus route, but are wanting and interested in going the computer science route. We have several students that end up discovering and loving computer science. And it also will have kind of a dual advantage because there aren't a ton of prerequisites. Algebra one being the only math requirement and then having at least a half of the credit from our technology program. And you can see that I listed the courses there that could serve. And that will also get some more exposure. And even whether students decide to take AP Computer Principles or not, that might open a door for more students being excited about that technology offerings and continuing to take them at our high school as well as taking them over at SUN. You can see the AP Computer Science is listed as one credit course. And that would be offered in students' grades 10 through 12. The other information that will be changing in the course report, we are just changing the names of our AP arts to reflect what is a college board change that we just have to update. So you can see that instead of AP art breadth and AP art depth, we are doing the 2D and 3D. Those two courses currently happen at the same time. It won't affect the course, the, the teacher's schedule or put any ripples in there. It's again, just renaming the title. There are no deletions at this point. However, I do want to point out that after we do that initial schedule request, we always look and typically any courses that are under 10, unless there is room in the instructor's schedule, like for instance, AP music, some of our technology courses, every now and then AP stats. But again, that depends upon the, the schedule at the time and what the instructor has room for. So those right now are all in the course selection guide, but that could change of what's offered if there are fewer than 10 students. And I will be giving that complete report as well as a history. I've been keeping track the last several years of our electives that we have added just to continue to show the, the number of students that are choosing those new offerings that we have put in since, particularly since we've been at the new high school. Because that new space, and again, that was the main thing, was new opportunities to learn and offer things that we weren't able to do before. So at this time, I would entertain any questions that you may have. And again, a more comprehensive detailing of what will be running will come later. We anticipate in April, the late, late March to beginning of April, that selection guide being out and the sheets offered. And we again, will be allowing the students to schedule online. We'll be doing our parent information night for the senior year, which is always very popular to help parents understand how to navigate that. So both that and the eighth grade, eighth graders coming to ninth grade, we'll be doing those virtually this year. And actually, I think we'll have a better attendance because of making it more accessible where people don't have to travel out to do them. So any questions?
Paula, do you anticipate being back on the regular schedule as opposed to the current semester schedule?
Oh, yes. I mean, it was the absolute right thing for us to do this year with mitigation, with contact tracing, ensuring that students weren't, you know, basically we cut staff and students exposures to how many, you know, how many people they would be seeing in a week and a half. And that just lessened any likelihood of spread. There are some advantages in subjects, but it's made it very difficult for, you know, for foreign language or math that meets, for instance, if you had your foreign language in the spring of, or had it last year and you didn't have it until the spring of this year, and then you didn't have it until the spring of next year, that's really hard for continuity and flow. So we, and as well as, it's really hard with some of the AP classes, particularly if you look at APUSH, AP History and the European History. It's just so comprehensive with the amount of material and reading that, again, we just, you know, don't feel that that is in the best interest of the student body for the entire school year. And, or again, that was just a temporary change for these unique circumstances.
Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Paula.
Thank you.
We'll move on to the athletic fund review. Dr. Fairchild?
Okay, so one of the things we've been talking about is looking at consolidating our athletic fund into our general fund. And so here's a little bit of information regarding that. Right now, we have two separate bank accounts, one for the general fund, one for the athletic fund. However, per PVE and general government accounting standards, the general fund and athletic fund are actually reported together. We merge them for our financial statements. And right now, we make annual fund transfers from the general fund to fund the athletic fund, which pays for supplies, equipment and transportation, whereas coach and game manager stipends come through the general fund. So it's already split how we fund our athletics right now. And so what we're proposing is to close the athletic fund account and consolidate it into the general fund at the end of this fiscal year, so that going forward, everything will be coming out of the general fund. Now, districts around us already do this on a regular basis. I know Mifflinburg specifically already has everything in their athletics coming out of the general fund. And I know other districts do this as well. So we would not be the first. Some of the advantages, one, no more annual transfers from the general fund to the athletic fund. The athletic secretary is no longer responsible for handwriting checks from the athletic fund and balancing a checkbook. We would consolidate all accounts payable through our central office functions there. And we would have consolidated budgeting and reporting in a single fund and a single account. So again, no merging for financial statements at the end of the year. Again, there would be no change to overall budgeted amounts, just a shift from one fund to the other. And it would also enable us to have closer monitoring of our expenditures as well as ensuring Title IX compliance. So what are the next steps? If the board approves, then later this month or in April, you would vote to close the athletic fund and we would begin the process of starting to write checks from the general fund so that we could make sure all of our outstanding checks are cleared. And then on June 30th, we would close the athletic fund bank account. Again, this would be part of your vote coming up. And then July 1, everything, both athletic and general, would come out of the same account, the same payment process. So just a quick overview there. And are there any questions? Okey dokey.
Thanks, John. The next item, the Board President's Report, just one item this evening. Last night was my first night I participated in a PSBA Board Leadership webinar series. I missed the first one, but I, I got to participate last night and then there's two more meetings. Just a really useful webinar. We got to, it was via Zoom. It was, there was a presentation and they broke us out into, into chat rooms. And it was really cool to hear just from other board presidents, see how different, different boards do different things. Over the past few years, Dr. Duraco and Mrs. Swope had some things that they did that worked out really well. And then when Dr. Scalpa came, things switched up a little bit. It worked for them. When Mrs. Swope left the board, the things that Dr. Scalpa and I did were a little bit different. And now the things that Dr. Polencheck and I are doing are slightly different. So just as we, we take a look at some of these things, one example is just the, our agenda planning meeting. I think it's really useful what we're doing now to incorporate Mrs. Moser, Dr. Fairchild and Mrs. Young into the meeting. So again, just as we, we kind of continue to work, build the relationship between Dr. Polencheck and myself, that, that partnership, that relationship is so unique. So it was really cool to get a different perspective of how other boards work with their superintendents. So it was a very worthwhile hour and 15 minutes and I look forward to the next two. So just a little update on, on some things behind the scenes that you all may or may not necessarily get to see or, you know, that we talk about much, but just even how we plan our meetings, I think is a very useful meeting, you know, the way we're doing it right now. So just a little update there. And speaking of Mrs. Moser, I'll turn it over to you for your report.
I too have a little update for you. My report tonight is to share with you what has been a two-year process of moving us forward in our elementary math curricular review. Our journey began pre-COVID in the summer of 2019. My intrepid committee of 15 math teachers, K through 5, came together as a work group. Usually the first step when you're considering curriculum revision and review is a needs analysis. And they were wonderful to work with that summer. We took a look at our student performance data. We took full advantage of their teaching craft expertise. And we examined everything from our math practices to the data on student performance. And we identified areas of student strengths. And we identified areas of student strengths. And we identified areas where we needed to absolutely make some changes in our math program. We identified the three areas that we thought were our greatest needs with our students, something called number sense, a basic first building block, if you will, and the first of the math standards in Pennsylvania's Common Core. Our students also need work with fact fluency. Again, a basic building block to mathematics beyond K5. And the third area that the math teachers identified were multi-step word problems, where often more than one math operation is necessary to solve. But also that students then are usually asked to either in writing or in conversation, explain their thinking. And our students are challenged by that. So given our identified needs, we worked the balance of the summer of 2019 on our own instructional practices. And I'm always pleased to work with a group of teachers that self-identify areas that they know we need to work on to strengthen our program. Our math teachers in grades three through five worked collaboratively to adjust and revise everything from their assignments to the assessments to something as conventional as going back to using a workbook alongside the e-text, because they really felt the kids needed to sit and solve the problems and work through the problems in a more diligent fashion. Our K to two math teachers sat down and reread the standards and really looked at what needed to be in place. And, and again, owning their own curriculum and their own effort to revise and review. We began a search for math materials to support the identified math needs, the right way to do it, if you will. And to that end, we began to meet last October, meeting monthly until March, when school closed. And at that time, we had seven series under review, doing a real comparison of the strengths of the series of materials, again, as well as adjusting to our own needs that we were identifying. We met from October until March, had to stop our work, of course, at that time. We looked at what was in use among our counterpart districts in the IU. We read the Ed Reports research on the comparative studies of strengths of programs and math series that were out there. And we used the expertise of Dr. Laura Dick from Bucknell University in the math education department, very willing to come and work with us, offering wonderful expertise as well. We came away with the selection and you have papers at your place. We came away with the selection of Bridges and Mathematics. And just to tell you a bit about Bridges, Bridges and Mathematics is from the Math Learning Center, a nonprofit that grew as an extension of the National Science Foundation. A very reputable body of, of people as well as, as math experts came together to create this particular program. Our math teachers like it. They see the value in the approach. They see the resources as what they want and need to accompany their own development professionally and their own expertise in the area of mathematics education. We reached out when we learned that State College uses this particular math series as well. And one of the pieces that excites me is, is state college teachers being willing to have some conversations with our teachers. They're into their fourth year implementing the program. They have some tales to tell. They will help us in our implementation effort as we bring this forward. So I'm excited about that additional resource as well. What I've shared with you is some overview and the URL website address for you to be able to look and see more about Bridges and Mathematics. I want to be able to bring it forward for the adoption of this series here yet this spring, so that we can take full advantage of what's always necessary, some good professional development surrounding the implementation. We're able to do that, making use of some of our built-in professional development time we have yet in this school year. Our teachers have a simple request. They want the materials and they want the opportunity to have the training before we leave at the end of this school year, knowing that it's a short enough summer to come back to next year and want to begin, obviously, to use the Bridges program. So you have also as well there the quote that I've been working with. And so you can see that for your information as well. We look forward to being well-prepared. I love the fact that it's coming from the teachers. This is the series they feel good about. And I am especially appreciative of the time and the effort that they've spent in this process to bring this forward. I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And again, the information you have there as well as the website will give you a good opportunity to take a look at the program. Thanks, Mr. Fetter.
Thank you. We'll move on to board liaison and community reports. Are there any reports anybody would like to give? Hearing none. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items anybody would like to have removed and voted upon separately? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Brown, seconded by Dr. Jablonski. Any discussion? Hearing none, will call vote please, Paula.
Yes.
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 All right, we'll move on to director's comments. Mary Ann.
I'm super excited to hear that the book swap happened. And just remember that excitement as a kid and my kid's excitement. So fantastic that you were able to make that happen. And thanks to the PSA for helping to organize. And so much going on at the high school is kind of overwhelming it. And it was because we haven't been in this building for a while. For me, walking back in tonight and just seeing everything on the walls and seeing everything that the kids are still doing and they're here doing it, it just hit me a little bit. So thank you all for all that you're doing to make that happen. And I'm excited about, you know, hearing that we're working on spring activities for the kids. I love that, you know, we're trying to make things happen for them in the best way possible. And I just appreciate everything that you're all doing to try to make that happen. So thanks, everybody. And thank you for these books. They are amazing. I want to take them all home with me. They look amazing. Thank you. I mean, they're not for me. I know that.
Yes, I was going to say thank you for the books. It's always so nice to see them here. And it's just such a great, such a great thing. And I also wanted to mention, I attended the town hall on Tuesday night. And first of all, I'm just so grateful for all of the collaborative work that's going into figuring out how to do things this spring. But it was also just a really nice sense of community in the meeting itself, I thought. And I just appreciate the way that you set it up and it had a real feel. It was, you know, not the same as being together in a room, but it came pretty close. So I was grateful for that spirit of community. I'm super happy about the ions. So good news about ions.
I echo everything that they've said. I just wanted to give a shout out to Kayden and Logan for the wrestling, their wrestling accomplishments. I think that's really impressive and wishing Mr. Drosen a speedy recovery.
Mary.
Oh, dear. Okay, I was just thinking of Mr. Drosen too, because I had two knee replacements. And I think what Paula was referring to was when you, when you get done exercising, doing your, your PT, you sit on like a bed type thing. And then they literally bend your knee back and they have a little measure there. Oh, man, I'll tell you, that hurts. And that first time on the stationary bike, the up and over, you think, oh, man. It's amazing what you take for granted. But I wish, you know, it's nice being back in the building again. And please keep in mind the dedication of the baseball field coming up.
Kathy.
I'm going to add congratulations to Mr. Wetzel. We're excited for Eric to have his new, his new opportunity. I share the same sentiment. It's great to be back together, having our meeting tonight. And Dr. Fairchild, I think you couldn't have said fund any more often in your brief presentation. I get the sense that it's about the funds. I like that. Thank you.
Glad you picked up on that, Mrs. Moser. I echo everything that's been said. And again, congratulations to Eric and best wishes to Jeremiah as he moves on to other endeavors. So, yep.
Yeah, I want to echo a lot of that. I'm really glad to have, as sad as we are to see Mr. Venico, really happy to have Mr. Wetzel there. I think a lot of people are going to be very happy and excited when that's official, you know, in a few minutes. Really wishing Mr. Drosen well for his recovery. I was happy to hear about using outdoor spaces for learning. And all the kids are just excited to be outside. My son reported three recesses today. I'm pretty sure two of those were actually class, but whatever. And then I just, I wanted to say, you know, I, the board sometimes has to make some really hard decisions. And this year in particular, that's why, you know, it may have sounded confrontational, but Dr. Polanczek took a real, and Mr. Fairchild, Dr. Fairchild took a really, really hard situation. And the, the board made those decisions for some positions that could not go forward. And we just tonight got close enough that, you know, we could close the deficit with just not transfers. And that's a comfortable place to be, right? So we are now like, we can all breathe and say, we have done the diligence and I think the, the best that we, that we can at this time. So the taxpayers understand like this, these are not easy decisions. And of course, we would want every single position that Dr. Polanczek originally put forward, right? Because we want all of that to support our teachers, to support our kids. This is just a wild and tough year. So just for, you know, for all of us to be able to sleep, we, we are within range.
You're here.
Cory.
I don't know that I could improve upon much of what all of you have already said. I echo that. I do want to congratulate Eric and wish Jeremiah the best in his future endeavors. It occurred to me today, or actually the other day, when I saw that on the upcoming agenda, if I'm not mistaken, I think I first met Eric in Lindtown when he was teaching math. So it's kind of like he's come full circle in a way. But congratulations, I'm sure that will be an excellent addition over there and a good fit.
I just wanted to inform the board vaccines are rolling out for our teachers this weekend. I'm, I'm so impressed with John Corelja and Bernadette Burkle and all of the work that they are doing to coordinate this. This is 2,000 vaccines they're hoping will be administered over the weekend. We had the task of, based on the slots assigned, seeing which teachers and any staff members, so it's any education worker, that includes coaches, substitute teachers, bus drivers, anybody who's in contact with kids or anybody working with special ed students, students that are learning English and elementary were the priority. And we were able to fill those slots, but then take some folks from what would be round two and move them forward for round one. We just use age as a criteria, just to have something that would be equitable. And those individuals, if people don't come, they'll, they'll get a phone call over the weekend saying, hey, there's a slot that's going to be open, can you get here? So, you know, we're hopeful that some of our round two people will also be able to get the vaccination. And round two administration itself isn't very far away. We're anticipating that'll be by the end of March. Along with that, you know, it's been with our various town hall meetings that we've been having on Zoom and we're going to continue with this month. And the kindergarten, Day in the Life of the Kindergarten Program yesterday that Mr. Rule was referencing. It's, it's great to see people excited about coming back. There's a lot of really good questions that people have about what it looks like in school and what it will be. And, you know, we just know that we have to keep those lines of communication open because parents give us their most precious gifts every day to take care of. And, you know, we, we do our best to make sure we're meeting their needs. We'll have another town hall next Tuesday on activities and events, just opening up the dialogue as things are looking brighter with this pandemic, what, what the community wants to see and how we can go about doing things. There may be modifications, but as much as possible, it's so important for everybody's psyche to experience some of those sentinel moments that happen every year as you're getting ready to finish that grade and move to the next. Then on the 23rd and the 30th, we'll have town halls for any parents who have their students in e-school, non-traditional homeschooling or cyber charters. If they're curious about what a transition would look like and how we would welcome the students back in and, and accept everything that they've done and find a way to blend that together, it's an opportunity to ask those questions and to talk about that plan. And we'll have our principals and our counselors and some teachers who are working directly with kids that have transitioned to be able to talk to that. Kids that do come back from e-school now, there are a number of check-ins that occur. But all of that, we know, isn't visible to the people who have not yet made that decision. And then finally, I want to thank Ms. Young and all the librarians for the selections of wonderful books. And your honor to be added to our library. Hopefully, kids will enjoy them for years to come and ask, who was that person? And what did they do? And how the decisions you make every other Tuesday night or Thursday night, as it would be, really impact the rest of their lives. And it's important for them to know that. Thank you.
I would just echo a lot of the things that were said. But one thing that kind of hit me is Dr. Jablonski's statements. And it brought me back to a conversation last night that we were having on the, between board member or board presidents. Our board is a really good board. I think we function very well together. And I think there's a lot of respect for each other. One board president was saying, kind of lamenting about a recent meeting where the board is so divided and so like nobody talks to each other. And she has to call on board members to ask for a motion. And even if she calls on somebody to make a motion, they won't. And she said that there was just a really painful meeting where nobody said anything. Nobody would make motions. And it just, hearing those things, because you hear of that, you hear of all the, you know, even locally, different meetings that pop up that, you know, have a lot of, people are criticizing the board or have a lot of passion behind the meetings. So I know it's out there, but hearing those things, it just makes me appreciate our board and how well we function together. We might not always agree on things. I don't think we should all agree on things all the time. So it's just nice to be able to have those conversations, have them respectfully, have some dissent among board members that, that we work through. And we all bring something different to the table. So I think our current board is, just does a really good job at that. And like I said, hearing her story just kind of makes me appreciate all of you guys a lot more. Not that I didn't appreciate you before, but just hearing some of these horror stories. And it really resonates me, resonates with me what Dr. Jablonski said, so.
Yeah, you raised a good point, because I went to a Midwest school board meeting years ago with Jen Hanks, we were presenting the budget. And it, it does make you appreciate your own board. I mean, we do work well together. But it hasn't always been that way, but I've been on the board when it wasn't. And it's, it's not fun.
Yeah.
Very stressful.
So just again, for everyone listening, for the community, you know, as Dr. Jablonski said, there have been, there's always difficult decisions. But of course, this year, there's been tremendously difficult decisions to make. So I just thank you for the, the participation and, and the respect that we all have for each other. With that, John, any citizens' comments to the board on non-agenda items?
All right, we'll spend the wheel here. And survey says, nope, no additional comments.
All right. With that, Matt, anything? Sorry, I'm skipping over you. Okay. Well, entertain a motion to adjourn. Moved by Dr. Jablonski, seconded by Ms. Stanton, I think. Dr. Zimmerman, anyone? Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting adjourned.